So, thank you very much for joining us this morning at our City Council Work Session. Appreciate you being here. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the rope?
Addison?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Lurick?
Hugh.
Manon?
Here.
Blah?
Here. Thank you. Before we go any further, and it's not on the agenda, but we need to wish Linda a happy birthday. We think it's good to have her here with us today and I would say we should sing, but I don't want to go through that. There's Connie could sing for her, that'd be great. But other than that, I'm sure a number of you in the audience have great voices, but we'll go ahead and just make sure we recognize her and a happy birthday to her. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two is a Ready Board Update. Brian Allen and Dell Spencer, City of Pocatello Ready Representatives, will give an update on the regional economic development for Eastern Idaho Ready Board activities. Before you do that, I should make the announcement that Agenda Item Four, Banning Development, has been pulled from the agenda. They have a company and that they are in town that they will not be able to be here because of an Agenda Item Number Seven as well. The Wildlife Ordinance has been pulled as well. And so if you're here for either one of those, I apologize, but they have both been pulled from the agenda today. With that, good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Council?
So let me give a very brief update. As you know, with the changes in the organization, we've needed to effect an organizational and structural change that has taken place. They do have some new administration and there is some actual administration functions taking place. So we're getting more notification, communication out of Ready. You should see that coming forward in conjunction with some new marketing material to make that happen. I do want to mention that with the change and review of the Executive Board, there's a new focus. And it's a three-tiered approach. The first tier is to protect, right? To protect those things that we're already doing well, to protect the functions where we can work with existing organizations, to expand that effort. And I want to clarify that we're not in any way trying to change the existing economic development committees and organizations that are out there. What we want to do is work in conjunction with them and then attract new opportunities to interface and interchange with those organizations. So, the key point here is that it is coordination with existing. So, let's use the example of Banning Development. We would be working with them, coordinating that, being a central repository of data and information, and focused on then distributing that. And our, the focus long-term is really to move away from the who owns this, who did this, to more, let's see what we can do to raise the water for everyone. And so that focus, I think, is a positive one. The focus from a regional area that I think is important is we're going to begin to really target, as opposed to Select USA, where they've kind of been going in this broad shotgun approach. What we're actually going to be doing is looking at South and West, so Wasatch Front and Boise, looking at those overflow where we really have an opportunity to stand out as a region and specifically as a city, and pull from those areas where there are opportunities. And I think that targeted approach is a much more appropriate approach to, one, to the use of the dollars that are spent, and for the time where we can have a real strategic vision. And those, you know, we are currently working on our, the implementation plan and strategic plan, to really have that cohesive mix of that three-tiered approach. I think that it changes what you've seen in the past, where there has been a little ambiguity in the message, where one mayor got one answer and another mayor got another answer as to the purpose of Ready. And I feel very strongly that we are on the right approach to a very singular, very clear and focused direction for Ready. And so I think that's positive, not only for Ready, but I think it's positive for all of Ready's partners. Finally, we are looking at changing the bylaws, which will include the mayors having a seat on the Executive Board. And as part of that, we will be accommodating the mayor's schedule as most of the cities meet on Thursdays. So we will be moving to have those meetings changed so that mayors can be a part of that decision-making process and you can really see where the taxpayer dollars are being used effectively. That's a very quick summary of everything, and I'll answer any questions you have.
That is amazing, the direction change and the attitude and stuff. It just feels different from me working with and visiting with them, and so it's exciting to hear it coming from the board as well, so.
We're very pleased with Dana's efforts so far. I will mention that there is a need for a maturation of the budgeting process that has been, that is being worked on. And so I suspect that that is something that when the mayors are part of that Executive Board, they'll see kind of what needs to be done to make this effective and the organization effective. I will briefly mention, I don't want to go into too much detail, but I do want to mention that we are looking at material that is real research material for the area that'll allow us to have a repository of data for us to go to third parties and to interested parties to come into the area, into the region, and we can say, hey, by the way, here's this repository of information. And then we can distribute it to economic development organizations throughout the region to use effectively.
Super. That's great. Council, any questions?
I've got a couple, two.
Please.
So I like the idea of the new change and the direction and having a clear focus. And I know you mentioned something about implementation. Can you give an example of how do you plan on implementing, you know, the cohesive efforts and what are the actual steps you guys take for that?
So, some of those are still fluid, but I can tell you that the Dana's have actually been going out and visiting with these economic development organizations with their leadership, looking at how we can truly provide that partnership connection. So first, it is obviously meeting. Second is understanding and attaining some level set for those relationships. And then beyond that, looking at how we can provide a means of strategy to effectively use what they're doing. So I, so the quick answer is, some of it is still fluid, and so I can't give you absolute answers, but most of it is going to be simply by defining who they are and who we are, so that we can meet them halfway. And, you know, in some cases, it's going to be a very setback relationship, you know, hey, call us when you need us. In other cases, it's going to be a very forward relationship, where we're going to really push the opportunity to bring to the table the information that we're collecting.
Perfect. And I guess the other thing was, you're talking about some research data, which is real. Who is creating that for you? Are you guys doing that internally, or is that also something you're collaborating on?
It is a collaboration, and I would be, I'm going to hold off on giving more detail in that simply because it is a process in the motion. So, but it is a, it's a qualified organization who's already done a regional study. We're simply updating it and offering our insight into that process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ryan, you mentioned the change in the board. Are all the existing board members going to stay?
At present, all the existing board members are on, I believe all of the board members have another year in their appointment. And I guess that raises the question, I don't know what the mayor's and the council's position was on my appointment, because I think it was originally for a year. Ready's perception was that was for two years. So I think I'm the only person in question in that regard. So, but everyone else, I think, still has another year on their commitment to the board.
I think that your appointment was a year because we were given it a year to see what we were going to do and if we continued on. I believe the intent was to just continue on the way we are.
And I'm happy to serve.
So if you're trying to get out of it, you probably need to do something.
I need to let you down now.
Yeah.
All right. Dale, anything to offer?
No.
With the new strategic plan and the looking at the bylaws, I mean, I guess you haven't decided yet definitely whether you're going to change the bylaws, but you're looking at changing them?
We will definitely be changing the bylaws.
You will be, okay.
We have to change the bylaws to include the mayors as part of the Executive Board. So they will definitely be changed. I suspect we will review other elements of the bylaws at that time.
And with those, with the bylaws and the strategic plan, is there a date or a timeframe of when those would be completed?
I suspect, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there. I suspect it will be our next Executive Board meeting. That has not been scheduled at present. It would probably be next month.
Okay.
Any other questions? Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three is a Pocatello Arts Council Update. Representatives from the Pocatello Arts Council will discuss the council's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning. I'm Frank Hartley, and I'm here to represent the Arts Council. This year has been very interesting for us as the face of the council has changed somewhat. We've got four new members, and those members bring plenty of talent and lots of expertise to the council. And I think we're going to continue moving forward, doing our work in the best way that we possibly can. This year, we supported two events that, both of them were performances. One was the Montana Shakespeare in the Park at ISU in July, which was very successful. And the other was Musicians West, which brings in a nationally or internationally known pianist who comes to ISU and spends time, spends time there with the general public. So, school students are invited, the general public is invited, and there's a performance included. And along with that, there's a master class that's offered as well. And that was really a good program for us this year. Currently, we're in the process of discussing, discussing a number of things that we have some interest in. We're looking at a potential collaboration with the Idaho Food Bank to do a fundraiser sometime in the coming year. We're still in the talking stages, so we're not quite sure where we're going to go with this, but everyone's pretty excited about the idea. We have had some damage to one of the sculptures that we placed in Upper Ross Park. I believe we placed it in 2015. And it's weather damage. It's not vandalism or anything of that nature. Evidently, the sealing on the travertine wasn't done well enough. And so there's water damage that broke the stone away. And we've decided, there's really not much of a fix other than to change, to change the way the seat itself lines up with the rest of the bench. It's going to have to come forward, and there's going to have to be a little bit of a trough that has to be ground in. So we've, we've discussed it with Walker Monument and Ryan Bathcock, and the fix should take less than $100, which will take out of the money that we have. See what else.
So Frank, after we have the fix on that, will we be, will seal it back up so that it's done correctly then, or?
Yes, we're going to make it a point to seal it well, and that should take care of it.
Okay.
And it may, you know, it may not even be that it wasn't sealed well enough. It could just be nature doing what it does.
Yeah, that's true.
So, that's true. Aside from meeting monthly and coming up with ideas and trying to do something along the lines of bringing art to Pocatello, that's pretty much it. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
What's the status of the Arts Council using the bus station?
The Arts Council is not involved in the bus station. You may be confusing it with the Pocatello Arts Center.
Yeah.
The Arts Center is in discussions, as far as I know, with Stephanie Colagi and members of the council. So, I have an idea of where they're at, but we're not involved in that. Although, we might be if they, if that were to go forward, we have X amount of dollars that we can put out on grants, so we might be able to, you know, contribute in some way. But other than that, that's it.
The collaboration with the Food Bank sounds really interesting. Can you say any more about that, or are there any ideas?
I can, yeah. I didn't want to bore you. Well, some time ago, I sat at this table here and discussed the potential of having a arts awards event that the city used to have. And the Arts Council was interested in maybe doing that. And at the same time, we were also exploring the possibility of doing an event that involved, that involved kids and pottery. It's called the Empty Bowls Project. So I met with Joanna Boot over at the Food Bank, and we discussed these things. And the idea, the idea developed that, well, maybe we could combine the two. And because she was looking at, evidently in Boise, the Food Bank does these empty bowl projects. The Empty Bowl Project basically involves empty bowls that have been either made by or decorated by local citizens. And they are put on auction, silent auction. The event generally has some music, some finger food, things of that nature. And the idea being that as people purchase these bowls, they'll take them home and put them in their cupboard. And every time they open that cupboard, they'll see an empty bowl, and will be reminded that there are people hungry. And so anyway, that's the idea. So we're kind of going through that right now in terms of how can we do it, when can we do it, and so forth.
It's a great project in Boise. I've been there the last two years. We get there, 45 minutes before it's supposed to open, and we'll stand in line an hour and a half. It's amazing the turnout. Thousands and thousands of people show up for that. $10, you get a bowl of soup and a piece of bread.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's really worthwhile. I did one in Detroit, Michigan, back in 1985, I think it was. And we raised $25,000 in about four hours.
That's great.
Depends on where you are and who comes, but we had a great crowd. Any other questions?
Questions? All right. Well Frank, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Five. Remember, Agenda Item Four was pulled, and so Agenda Item Five is Aid for Friends Funding Request. Representatives from Aid for Friends and Planning and Development Services will be present to request council's direction on funding for the proposed new homeless shelter.
Good morning.
Adam Lane, CDBG Program Manager.
My name is BJ Stensland, and I'm the Executive Director at Aid for Friends.
Hello again. Brady Ellis with Idaho Housing Finance. It's installing my driver. So, we're here for a couple reasons this morning, and so BJ and Brady can update you kind of on the status of where their project is, and answer details, and any questions you have about where they are. I'm here this morning to get some direction from you. If you decide that you do want to participate in their project using CDBG, we have deadlines coming up for our program, as we're in the funding cycle planning at this point. And so, you know, I need some direction on how you would like me to move forward, so I can start putting those things in the process, because we're going to end up being too late to do some of these things. So, that's why I'm here. And, I'll get this up, sorry. Okay. So, to recap, and so from my perspective, where we are, and then to give you what I need to move forward on this. So, right now, IHFA has an accepted conditional offer on a property of $350,000, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, with the seller asking for a closing within 120 days. The conditions for, of the sale are approval of a conditional use permit, and completion of an environmental assessment, and us receiving authorization to use funds from HUD. And that authorization must be received prior to closing on the property. So before the 120 days are up, the EA must be completed, and the authorization to use funds must be received. Their original funding request was $350,000. That's the request of the city, $300,000 of CDBG, of a loan payable over six years, and then $50,000 of general fund. They revised that request to be $350,000 of CDBG, of a loan payable over seven years. The question came up that what if CDBG goes away? Even though unlikely to happen, you know, CDBG going away in its entirety, it's can be possible for them to just eliminate small entitlements, which we are. So, it's possible that that happens. And so, I wanted to address what would actually happen if our CDBG allocation went away. And so, to illustrate, the program year 2018 allocation was $447,315 plus program income. As of October 1, so the new fiscal year, we had, and it's somewhat estimated, but it's pretty close, $508,685 of unobligated funds. And so those funds are programmed for something, but not obligated to a contractor, you know, must be paid out. So those would be funds that were actually, could be available to be allocated to something else. And I also projected that at the end of this program year, we'll have about $227,000 of unobligated funds. So, the point I'm illustrating here is that as of October 1, HUD walks in here and says, you guys are done, you're not getting another dime from us. We're not, we're not closed out at that point. We would have about a half a million dollars of funds that could go to cover, to kind of close out the program and cover any, if we had a loan outstanding with IHFA, that we could pay off that loan and, you know, meet our obligations with CDBG, therefore not putting general funds at risk. Are there any questions on that?
Is that, was projected unobligated at the end of 3/31/19? That's in addition to the 508?
No, that would be, so I was able to do October 1, because we just, we were just there, so I was able to see exactly where we were. No, that we're going to, we're going to keep going. So as we get to the end of March of 19, we'll have spent about half of that money. So we'll be at 227. So again, to show you that, you know, even if they came in at the end of a program year and said, you're not getting any more money, which, it's just not going to happen that way, but even if they did, we would still have about 227.
So, why are those called unobligated if we already have a reason to spend them?
Because they're programmed for a specific purpose, for housing rehabilitation or infill acquisition or something like that. We just haven't had a project that we've signed a contract for and that we're going to, you know, actually accomplish and have to pay the bill.
So we don't necessarily have those spent yet?
They're not spent, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we could, they're programmed, say they're programmed for housing rehab, and we, now we need that money to pay off our loan. We would do an amendment to our action plan, saying, okay, instead of rehab, we're going to do, we're going to pay off our obligation of this loan and close that out. That's what would happen if CDBG funding went away.
And would that be okay, and approved and accepted if we took infill allocations and changed it? Like, there's going to be no issues getting that to happen?
Right. HUD only cares about that the activity is an allowed activity. We get to decide, you get to decide what to do with your money. So, yeah, that would be approved, you know, as long as we have a reason and it's approved activity, they would approve it.
Okay.
And even if we were declassified as entitlement city, we still could go through the state to get funds if it went back to the way it was, right?
That's a possibility, yes.
I mean, if we dropped as a, say they raised the threshold to a population of 100,000. And so entitlement cities or anybody that has 100,000. We used to get money through the state as an allocation instead, because the state gets an allocation in addition to the cities. And it goes to the non-entitlement cities.
Correct.
So there would be a pool to draw on, even if they did do some realignment.
Right. Correct.
Brady, you had said at one time that it might be a forgivable loan if CDBG went away. Since then, we have a letter that says that it would not happen, no way we could. BJ, you were going to find out and follow up what exactly that, if it would be forgiven, if it would not be forgiven, if we could apply for it to be forgiven, or whatever. What is the status on that? Are we?
Yeah, so I hope it wasn't unclear in that first statement. It was more just, yeah, that's something we can consider or investigate, and kind of talk internally about whether that's an option to forgive any loan. So since that presentation when we were here, we did talk about that, and felt like the half million dollar contribution was pretty substantial, and weren't looking to pay in addition to that, hence the not forgiving any loan to the city. And so, and Adam on his next slide will have some numbers here and what's proposed in that breakdown of our request, which appears to effectively reduce the actual loan amount. So we're in a position of not having this hard and fast repayment deadline or amortization. So if it is more agreeable to the city, or just makes the budgeting easier, it could be extended out, you know, much further than seven years. That's not as much of a concern for us, but there is a difficulty with forgiving any loan.
I perceive your dilemma, because if you said, if anybody defaults, we're going to forgive them, then everybody default. So you have to take it on a case-by-case basis as it develops, because it's not good business to just automatically say, oh, we'll forgive loans. And because it comes on a case-by-case basis on what the cause and effect of that default is.
Certainly.
Well, and I'm not confident that we said just forgive loans just on because. I think it's very specific. If CDBG goes away on a federal level, that they would forgive this loan.
That's a philosophical what-if question. Somebody else could say, well, what happens if our funding source goes away? And people are not prone to give loans of any kind when somebody's already anticipating they're going to default. It's only when you get in a default situation that they weigh what they can do then. So it's hard to say what you can do in advance.
Right. So, you know, I came up with a recommendation. If you do want to move forward, you know, I do believe, as the manager of these funds, that $350,000 is a very large ask of a very small entitlement city. And, you know, to minimize the impact on our program, and make sure that we're not affecting other, you know, other people benefiting from these funds, I just put together a proposal that I would be comfortable moving forward with to meet their $350,000 commitment ask. And so that would look like something like, like, so Aid for Friends has a program year 2018 award, which they haven't spent on anything yet, that could be allocated to this project, you know, whether it's towards the acquisition or towards A&E or something like that. That's available. They've requested a 2019 award for architectural and engineering of $68,000. So we could award them that in 2019. The environmental assessment completion and... The environmental assessment completion and administrative costs over six or seven years would be some in-kind staff costs, and there are some, some hard slash soft costs for the, for the EA completion of about $25,000. And then a loan payable to IHFA over five years of $250,000, the first payment coming in 2020. And, you know, that, so all those commitments would total to $350,000 that they're asking for. And so, this all comes with the stipulation that the $250,000 goes towards acquisition of the property. So, we're going towards purchasing of it, and that we're keeping the money out of the rehabilitation of the property. That has to do with, if we, if we put money towards the rehab, you know, all our strings get attached to the project. And the project management, the admin on our side of that would not, would just be so difficult. Our staff can't handle that, managing that process, and the monitoring of it would just, can't do it. So, it's stipulation that the money has to go to acquisition. So, the, the direction I need today, it has a lot to do with that. The seller asking for 120-day close, which we're about 100 days from that at this point, we have to complete the environmental assessment, which includes a phase-one study, which is time-consuming, you know, within that 100 days. That's already really tight. I, I can't guarantee that that gets completed before then. So, we would need to move forward on that immediately. The project needs to be included in the 2019 action plan, which is gonna, you know, needs, needs to be included in the process right now. So, as we go, in November, get some approval from the advisory committee, and it'll come before you in December. So, we would need to include that in the process. And then development of a loan agreement with IHFA, so that's all included in the, you know, we have a deal in place before we're actually committing these funds to them. And that would be the direction that I need.
So, I have a question for you. You had on the slide before that a revised, request revised to 350. The request originally was 300. It's now been revised, revised up to 350.
No, it was 300 on CDBG and 50,000 of general fund, which is 350,000.
Okay.
Original funding request.
I thought we discussed not having any come out of the general fund.
We did, that's why we shifted it down to revised request of 350,000.
Okay, from three, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We kept everything, just reallocating.
All right. No, that's, that's perfect, thank you. All right, then if you can go to the next slide, now that it's, it matters on the next question really, but we just approved 50,000 last week for something for, didn't we approve?
No, they were asking us for that six, they were saying that they were gonna ask for the 68 last week, right?
Oh, okay.
Intention.
That was the intent to, okay. And that is part of the 350.
We haven't approved it.
And I just, can I make a comment on that?
Please.
I actually like the way you've got that set up, Adam, because I think we first heard, "Oh, well, it's gonna be 350,000, that's all we're gonna ever ask for, and we're not gonna ask for more." And so, then last week when we heard that extra 68, we're like, "Wait, is that, you know?" So, if this is all rolled in together, I think I feel a lot more comfortable with that.
We were, we had asked for you to, you gave us a list before of potential donors and, stuff, and we had a few concerns or questions on the amount for, like the City of Chubak and stuff like that. Have you visited with Chubak yet?
Yes, we have.
And did you ask for the addition that we had asked for, asked you to, or you, did you stay at level with that original page?
We stayed at the 25,000, and we gave the presentation, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that will be decided. And they're also looking at whether it's a one lump sum present for contribution. So, I'm not sure internally how they're looking at that request.
Okay, so, but you decided that it was better off not to ask for the, I think we asked you to request 50 up to 50 from them.
I had private conversations with the Mayor England and asked him to go to his finance department to see what was doable and realistic, and the indication I got was the 25,000.
So, the handout that was just given to you, the top section there, it lists the property that we are under contracting currently. It'll give you the renovation, acquisition or renovation estimate. It also lists funding that has been committed up to this point. Those are hard commitments, although I think if you look at kind of soft commitments and evaluating where we're at with some of the pending requests, it's, I think we're actually pretty close to meeting that 100% match and close to a million dollars there. But then below that, so you'll see total hard commitments, funding gap between that estimated acquisition rehab cost of 1.6 million and the committed of 723,500. And then there is a section that also lists pending requests. And so, there, it includes this request that we're talking about today. It includes the county, City of Chubak, and several other potential donors. And then it'll give you, I mean, if all of those came through, we still have a gap of just under 200,000. And there's a list there of our intent to, of who we would reach out to, what type of funding we would pursue to, to close that gap.
So, so with this, let's just go down the line. We know where we are with, with Pocatello, we're talking about that right now. Have you formally requested from Bannock County, and what if they said, what has happened in there?
We have, we presented to them last month, early last month, I believe it was. And what we're asking for is 250,000. That includes both the donation of the current shelter. We would have that go into our foundation once the new shelter, and again, there's some loaning of money there from IHFA. We would then sell that property and repay that loan with the proceeds. The shelter now or that home ranges, I think I put on here like, maybe not, 135 to 161, I think, is the assessment value that we're getting on that property. And the rest would come from, from, from other accounts there at the county. And then, City of Chubak, that's the 25,000. Bingham Healthcare Foundation, LDS Church, those are, you know, smaller amounts there, and we're not, we don't have a good sense, I don't think, of what the reality is of those coming through, the last two there. With, but with the county, we met with them, we put in the requests, they had a few questions for us, we've sent in a response to them answering those questions, and we're just waiting for kind of a response of what's our next step.
You say our foundation, whose foundation?
Sorry. Idaho Housing and Finance has created a separate 501(c)(3), and we do a lot of our reinvestment activities through that foundation and act as kind of a fisculation or third-party for projects of this nature. So, all of the donations that you see here, like grant from On Semiconductor, that would go into the foundation, so it's not going directly to Aid for Friends, and it's held specifically for this project.
These are just currently commitments that we've actually reached out to under the pending. So, we do plan on expanding that and getting a bigger type of campaign for corporations and, and businesses, as well as other foundations. So, these are the ones we've identified, not the ones we're going to go.
Well, and it's, it's pretty typical when you're raising money to go get the bigger lumps first so that you're, you've got a good anchor point. In fact, I don't know any professional fundraising entity that doesn't go to their stable sources first before they expand. And, so I, I understand that.
The On Semiconductor, that donation that you have here was originally twice that amount, and I know they came back and said that they were for sure this, but they were still requesting the other half. Do you know if there, there's been any movement there?
We're gonna meet with them this afternoon.
Okay.
And the, the information I received was that towards November, they're going to look at what their corporate giving account looks like and then reallocate.
So, there's still a possibility that that could go up another 50?
Oh.
Possibility, I'm like...
Yes.
They did say that they're under committed right now.
Okay.
How far along are your plans for this building? Do you have engineering and architectural, is that part of it done?
Well, we're asking for the detailed architectural and engineering effort to be paid for through CDBG. We have had an architect and a construction company go through, and they put together a magnitude of work estimate based on intensity of rehab, and that's where we got the 1.6. So, we're moving forward in that, but without a contract to do the, the scope of work, the specifications and drawings, we're just doing, this area would look like this amount. This is higher intensity versus offices that might be less intense work. So, yeah, we're going there.
So, Adam, I have a question. If we commit to this, and you just said that the 250's got to go toward, or our, our value has to go toward purchasing the building, and they do not complete the environmental assessment, what does that do to us? What does that mean?
My recommendation was, is that we can't participate in the rehab at that point. Is it impossible for us to? No, I mean, we still could with all those strings attached. Is there a possibility for us to participate in a smaller way, proportions of it? Maybe, but again, I don't, I don't have a scope of work, and so I can't, I can't recommend that at this time. So, it's, it's hard for me to say, "Yeah, we should commit to about a large amount of funds to the rehab at this time." So, my, my recommendation would be, if we're not able to commit to the acquisition with the completed EA, would be that we can still participate with the 68,000 in A&E, you know, give them some, some direction and help with their project as a whole, but hard, hard money, no.
So, like, we would have to say, "We're willing to commit that contingent upon those being done in time."
Acquisition, yeah.
Otherwise, okay.
And we're also realizing that the 120-day due diligence is tight. We're gonna contact our Realtor and see what kind of flexibility there might be with that, with the seller, knowing that we're moving forward in this, this direction.
What's the drop dead date on that 120?
January 31st. Yeah, January 23rd, I think.
Can I ask another clarification? So, I think the council was generally uncomfortable with committing anything out of the general fund, especially for future years, you know, we can't get into that. So, we're, it's 100% that we would be able to cover this all out of CDBG then? There's no way we would ever get into where we would have to do that?
Yeah, I couldn't say that. I mean, it's most, it's probably most likely, if you look at the way that, you know, CDBG's been funded and our, you know, previous year's funds that are all always available, you know, at, at any one time, I don't think there's any been a point in time in the last 22 years that we wouldn't have been able to cover, cover this bill. That, that's probably true. But say it's guaranteed, we never have to dip into general funds to cover maybe a small portion of or something, I can't say that.
It depends on year to year.
It depends on year to year, it depends on, you know, every, every year's allocation going forward. You know, we could do everything, you know, everything we can to make sure that we, we can try to pay off that bill quicker. I mean, we're saying 50,000 a year of the allocation to go pay back the loan, you could say we could try to make it 75 to minimize the risk going forward. Yeah, you could, we could do that.
Well, and, and, we were just told that we could extend it out too if we needed to. It sounds like, the flexibility of forgiveness is probably null and void, but the flexibility to extend it from a five-year to a 10-year or a whatever may help, and if the CDBG money doesn't dry up, but drops down to $100,000, then that might...
How long can we keep some of that unallocated? We can't keep it like in a reserve for...
No. We have to continue to spend funds. Okay. Yeah, we have to continue to spend funds, and you can't just, no, we can't save a pot of money like that. From year to year, we have to say, "This is how we're gonna spend all of our money."
But we could even take a big chunk of that and do like an initial lump or something like that?
I mean, yes, I mean, say our, our allocation goes way up. Like this year, it went up by like almost $70,000 from the previous year, and that was a surprise. So, you could always plan for that, say, "Hey, if it ends up coming, anything above this amount, we'll go to, as a lump sum payment to this, to, to help ease the, the risk to future general funds."
Would there be any early payment penalty?
What kind of interest are, is there on that repayment?
We don't have any...
Zero.
Yeah, we don't have any interest in charging any.
Okay. I have a question for Public Works Director slash Engineer, if I could have Jeff come up here real quick. So, Jeff, knowing that we have 100 days to do, to complete an environmental assessment, phase-one study, and that's gonna come from the engineering world.
Right.
What's the chances of that happening? I mean, is that, seems like that's a pretty tight...
It is fairly tight. I think if they got after it, I think it could probably be done. You know, if they really got committed to it and tried to make it happen, I think it possibly, yeah, be done.
Do we have an engineer that we've got in mind to do that, or do we still need to?
They're talking about the environmental assessment being done and if we have an engineer lined up to start.
For the, okay, so the environmental assessment will be completed by staff, so it's myself and, you know, my staff. This includes a phase-one study, and we have an environmental engineer that we have a quote from, and they can start on that almost right away, as soon as we tell them to go.
So, that's already in place? I mean, you have it lined up?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Have you talked to them about the timeframe that they're working at here?
I have, yes. If, if we beg them, they'll, they'll go as fast as they can. And, and so, I've already begged.
Should we give them bonus? Yes.
So, it, it plays into, can we get it done in the 100 days? We think so. If they're, if everybody cooperates and, you know, things go right, and nothing is found either, I mean, they could find something and then we stop and we're not making it. So, that can happen. But if everything goes right, 100 days is probably doable. A lot of it's out of our hands, has to do with legal notices and comment periods, and it goes to HUD, and they have to approve it, and those things are out of our hands.
What does it do to the timeframe, I mean, the 100 days requirement, or the 120, which it originally was? If you, if something is found, does that stop the clock or anything?
I don't know. I mean, the seller is the one that requested that 120, so whether they let, let that, had they given us an extension on that, I don't know. Yeah, that's, that's part of my concern about funding acquisition.
It is a property that's been on the market on and off, and prices have fluctuated over the past three to four years. So, I, to me, that kind of indicates an ability to do what's necessary to, to sell the property. We intend to talk with the Realtor later today just about what would our approach be? Just being a little preemptive about trying to extend that, that close date at this point, rather than waiting to see if we can complete that or not.
And the offer includes the completion of some of these tests, is that correct? That, that's what the due diligence is. If there was something that was found, then we would go back, I assume, and renegotiate and say, "Hey, we didn't realize this was underground, let's extend it." So, there are provisions within the offer.
And this also, the, the offer does also include the, the conditional use permit being approved as well. I mean, could run into problems there, and my recommendation would be until that is a... I mean, could run into problems there, and my recommendation would be until that is approved, we're not putting any hard money into this project. I mean, we can start the EA and do that, but we would not be committing anything to this until the CUP is approved.
So is that CUP on the schedule to come in front of us? Or we have to purchase the building before you can do that? What are you, what's the process?
Excuse me.
You're fine.
We can start right away, and I have been working on it and anticipate some middle at the end of this month, which would, in the scheduling, make it an approval by the end of December. So again, that's within that timeframe. So it's on my, it's on my plate.
Thank you. You didn't really answer my question, but I don't think I'm going to get an answer from you, so.
Just off, not that knows, but we have an environmental engineering staff, and so, you know, if we can help out with the process, and Hannah's got a lot of environmental experience and deals with EA's, and so if there's anything we can do to help out with the process, we'd be willing to do that as well, so, yeah. But you're still most likely going to have to hire somebody to actually do it, so we could help really work for more help while we can.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council?
Well, I'm kind of curious. Okay, on the unobligated funds of 508,000, how much of that have people put requests for? That if we took from that, it would be closing issues?
At this, it's none. I mean, it's all programmed to something already.
Okay.
So we're not, I mean, we have projects for that money already. I mean, that's why we're going to whittle it down to the 227 in the next, you know, six or seven months.
Okay.
So you've allocated into buckets, but you haven't started dipping into those yet?
Right, right. And all of those projects, we just haven't started yet. And then a lot of it has to do with homeowner rehab, which those requests come in as we go. As homeowners come in and they need a roof or sewer line or water line. So that's, those aren't obligated to a certain project, but they are programmed for homeowner rehab.
I guess what I was trying to figure out is if we were to use some of that, like, is somebody going to be sitting there super disappointed because they've already kind of thought they were? But you're saying it could just be rehab stuff that comes up? It's not necessarily...
If we do this, we're not taking from that 500 at all?
If we extend it out over the seven? Yeah. But the reason I was asking is I was just going to, I was kind of interested to see what the council thought, if they thought we want to extend it out longer, or if we want to do a bigger lump upfront just so that we know that we're not going to potentially have any kind of an issue where we're...
So you're thinking that 227?
What would you use your budgets?
You're thinking that 227, we could take 100...
I'm just curious to know what people think about that.
Level the rest out.
That would be, if that's the thought process, that would be detrimental to the program ongoing. That's taking, that would be taking away from now money to do that. And we'd have to take, we would be taking that from somebody else at this point. All of this that I'm talking about is basically future money. It has nothing to do with the 508,000.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is I'm just trying to figure out, like legally, what can we commit to then if we don't know that we have?
Well, we know we have, will you go to the next slide? We know we have the 508,000 for 2018 that has not been spent.
Hasn't been spent, but it is programmed for something.
It's programmed.
That would be if HUD says you're not getting any more money, we would have to do a huge change to use that 500,000.
But wait even a few months till March, you know, half of it's gone.
It's kind of like, okay, we had a car wreck, that means you don't get braces this year type of scenario, I think. You know, we were going to, you're going to get braces next year. But we had a car wreck and other things changed, and that's because HUD didn't allocate. That's what I think I'm hearing, is what Adam's saying.
If you wanted to commit a larger sum upfront, that you would take that from 2019, the new allocation that's coming. So we could do that. We're saying 68,000 now, you could call it 100 if you wanted. It is taking it from something else planned, but...
So Adam, we know we have 200 or 500,000 from, you keep switching on me there.
Sorry.
We know we have the 508 for 2018. That's really kind of, out there, we've said this is what we're going to spend it on. We're talking 2019 money.
Correct.
Right now, not 18. So the 508 is from 2018. What is our allocation that we've received for 19?
Well, we don't know that yet.
We don't know that.
We don't know that yet. Planning purposes, we're assuming the 447, 315, which was 2018's allocation, probably going to get something similar to that. Just looking at what Congress has done as far as funding HUD, their recommendation is an even funding level, so we're probably going to get something similar. It's not going to be bigger, most likely, and it's not going to be a huge drop.
From 447?
From 447.
Okay.
I do like the idea of what you said earlier, if it ends up being higher, like this year was more than we thought, that we stipulate any, you know, funds over a certain amount, any additional funds could go towards this project so that we could end up paying it off sooner or, you know, allocating more money earlier.
But for 2018, we've got around 68,000, almost 100,000.
For 2019, we could budget it in about 68,000 right now.
That's 2019.
2019.
So 2018, we haven't touched 2018 dollars for this project.
7,000 and...
The 7,000, they have a $7,000 reward from 2018.
Okay, yeah, see you, okay. Okay, so 7,000. So really, today, you're not asking us how we want to spend it and how we want it allocated on an annual basis if we're going to do 100,000 or 50,000 or 200,000 or whatever. You're just asking for a commitment that we will commit $350,000 of future money, future CDBG money moving forward.
And that, and that can break down if we get, as I understand your CDBG funding, you get an allocation every year, and we have to approve that allocation every year. So what we're making our commitment to do is to spend 50,000 or more over seven years of that money dedicated, which allows us to actually say, oh, we got an extra $100,000 this year, just kick in 100,000, 50 of that 100,000 and 50 that we were committing forward. But you're doing it each year in your annual allocation. We're just saying that our policy that we're going to set going forward will be the Aid for Friends. This money will come off the top of every allocation, that minimum amount.
Is that going to satisfy Idaho Housing and Finance then? Because that, your letter was kind of like to the contrary, like we can't just say we're committing CDBG money. You kind of were saying, it's fine if it comes from CDBG, but if your CDBG goes away, you have to commit, otherwise that you're going to pay it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the, that's the hard thing, is we wanted to say we're doing it out of CDBG, and they want us to say you're doing it regardless.
Well, we can't commit for future funding, either than...
We make budgets all the time where we think the commitment's going to hold, that the legislature's going to approve certain things that they've always done. And there's a certain level where you have to look at historical performance and say, CDBG has been around for 20 years for this community. It may go away, but some could, they change our gas tax, or they could change sales tax, or, you know, all those things that we project out. All of those things are somewhat fluid. I'm not really concerned that CDBG's going to go away. I think we're chasing something, a minute possibility. It's a possibility, but it's minute. And the reality is, we've got a homeless population that's growing. It's becoming greater numbers of families than individuals. Aid for Friends has been in this facility a long time. They've been in our community for 30 years. A growing community economy produces much more demand on those type of services. And I just feel like we've got a pretty good plan in front of us right now. And we need to fish or cut bait.
It sounds like, it sounds like regardless, in 2019, we know it's not going away in 19. We know that.
Yes.
And we don't have a plan for it in 2019 yet.
Correct, it's, we're formulating and we started that off.
And we're guessing that it's going to be close to $447,000.
Correct.
And if we end up with the allocation for 19, and they say this is the last one you get, and then you can just obligate it all there, and everybody else that is, that is depending on CDBG right now just goes away, and Aid for Friends gets the remaining part of it, and it's over.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it looks like there's a way for it to be covered in the future without it coming out of general fund and stuff, even if it did go away.
And I would say that this is such a substantial program, they're probably not going to cut it all away at once, they'll wean people or everything, just make them go on a starvation diet.
That's true, that's true. It is a big number, I know that.
In the United States, it's billions of dollars.
No, what I'm saying, the 350, I'm not talking about the United States.
Well, I'm just saying, but the chances on them cutting us off flat, they're going to, if they cut back CDBG funding, they're going to wean us, I think. Because there's too many, they vote every two years. And somebody's going to hold a long memory. And so they'll, the likelihood of them just going stark on this is pretty remote.
I think the concern that I have is, is we have a number of other very worthy entities out there that need CDBG money to continue on as well. And we're obligating, if it did, and I'm not going to argue whether it will or it won't, if it did go away, we're saying we are going to make sure this is done and paid for completely, and all the other entities just are going to have to figure something else out. That's, that's, the 350 is just a big ask. It really truly is a big ask, and so I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying it's a big ask, and, and so that's what it is. But I do believe that we'll be able to be paid for in 19 if they came and said, you know, we don't care that we're elected every two years, we really don't care, we're doing it, have good memories, whatever. We're cutting you and we're putting you on a starvation diet. In 2019, we will still end up with $400,000, which will cover it. So I think that, I think that we'll still be able to cover it, but...
And I like your recommendation. Thank you, Adam, for coming up with something like that and something specific. I like taking, getting rid of the 50,000 out of general fund and figuring out a way to make it CDBG, but also making sure that it's acquisition and not rehab. I think that's a smart move, so I think the recommendation is a solid one. And I feel more comfortable having those specifics.
My biggest concern now is the 100 days.
Yes.
Quite frankly, that's my biggest concern, because if we say we're going to do the 350, and we're 105 days out, and we cannot any longer do the purchase, that's when we're going to have the issue, I believe.
Well, and so I think the direction, if you want us to need to move forward, is the 250 is the question mark. We'll do everything we can to get the EA done and get it closed and get the money into acquisition. But if it doesn't happen, they're having, going to accept that the 250 is no longer on the table at, you know, at this time. The rest of it can still be committed to. You know, 68,000 to A&E is, that's a really good, that's still a really good, you know, allocation to them.
Sure.
And conditional use permit too.
And the conditional use permit, absolutely. That's their whole question.
So if we were to make a motion, it would have to have a couple of components. We're really essentially approving the plan that has $100,000 upfront, so to speak. Then we're saying that we're going to commit the other $250,000, but that will be stipulated to an effective conditional use permit in the EA coming in.
Correct.
And that's out in the future, so it doesn't take, it doesn't matter how long it takes to get those two things done, you know, we're talking another program year out before we have to evaluate that.
Correct.
Okay, Council, what's your desire? What are you thinking?
I move that we approve the Aid for Friends request. It's broken down in the recommendation in the presentation. With the provision, should problems develop from the conditional use permit process or the EA, we are able to reassess $250,000 of future CDBG funding.
I second.
Okay. So Connor, we have a motion by Councilmember Bray and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Would you please call the room?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Melon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we're committed to it. I'm going to recommend, I'm going to recommend to you to please visit with the seller of the property and extend that 100 days. I don't, I don't know that you can get it done in 100 days. That's my big concern. So see if you can get that extended, please.
That's very good.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, Council, thank you for your work. That was a good discussion, and with that, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, Hannah, I skipped right past it. She's like, oh, wait a minute, we're not...
It's the funnest one.
Just kidding, don't turn us off.
Game on.
Just a little bit of information there. So we just looked at the environmental assessment that was done.
Just a minute, if you would, please.
Okay.
I appreciate that. During the meeting, I got to get it back going again. We will move on to agenda item number six, Pocatello Urbanized Area Stormwater Permit. Staff members will present, Council, with an update on the final draft of stormwater permit for the Pocatello Urbanized Area. Thank you.
Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Oh, Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Division Manager.
And if I could backtrack just for a minute, we looked at the environmental assessment that was done on the Garrett Way property, and that process took a year and a half to complete on that environmental assessment. So it's a lengthy process. That building and that facility is probably quite a bit different than the one that they're looking at, and so... But it does take some time, and so they need to get hopping on it pretty quick, so.
All right, stormwater now. So Pocatello is getting a new permit. I was expecting to come here today and tell you we were in the comment period, but as we'll talk about later, that hasn't begun yet. But basically, we've got a cartoon here that really illustrates our two NPDS permits that we have. We have a stormwater permit on the left, half of each of the comics, and the wastewater on the right. And so the issue is, how does that water get cleaned and what condition? When it comes out of either your wastewater taps or your stormwater system, does it arrive at wastewater? We have a nice facility that cleans everything up. Stormwater, we don't. We just come out, as you go into the pipe, you tend to come out. So just a little history for those of you that might not be aware of the history of our stormwater permits. So this is a picture of the Cuyahoga River on fire in 1952. It was about the 13th time it caught on fire. But at this time, this started the formation of the Clean Water Act. And in 1950s, everybody had TV for the first time in all of their households. So a river catching on fire caught national attention, and the Clean Water Act in 1972 was formed to address some of these major pollutant issues, and including the NPDS permitting system. So today, we don't have rivers on fire, yay, but we still have issues. You know, this is the Portonup River, it's brown in the water, and the stormwater coming out of it is brown. And so starting in the 90s, stormwater permits started to be enacted. And Pocatello got their first one in 2006. In 2003, we applied, we had to apply, there's not really a get-to-apply thing. And we got a draft in February. We spent a long time negotiating on that. That was John Sigler before I arrived here. Final permit was issued in 2006, and it was a five-year permit. And ISU was inadvertently left off that permit, and that is important for later on. And permit cycles are five years. 2011, we applied for a permit, and we haven't... 2011, we applied for a new permit, and we haven't gotten that yet, so, our old permit's just administratively extended, until we get a new one. So what have we done during this permit cycle?
So we're seven years out from when we were supposed to have a permit.
Yeah.
And what is our holdup?
What is our?
What's the holdup?
EPA. And I'll get into that one in a minute. Yeah, great, great question. So, in the past, I mean, 12 years, 11 years, we did Sacagawea Park, so this was one of the first big actions, so to take this particular stormwater outfall offline, it now all flows into Sacagawea Park, in giant events, it flows back to the river, but for the most part, it seeps into our groundwater, and it's working really well. This is the first cell where we can drain it when we need to, and you can see, there's a two-foot of elevation for water, one foot, it's, you know, ground level is, is down there, and so we have captured that much sediment in a short period of time, in that first cell of Sacagawea. Awesome.
Hannah, in this picture, is this an annual thing, or is this since, for over the last 11 years?
It has been cleaned once, so, and this was since that cleaning.
Where's that located, in Sacagawea Park?
It's the first cell that the water flows into, so if we go back to this picture, the water is piped down this greenway, over the river right here, and it flows in right here, and right here is this outfall that, so we can drain this first cell and send the water down through, and the water goes like this, and then it can go like this, and there's an outfall here, but, if there's a lot of water, we send it into an old oxbow that's right here, and then it just sort of can flow into the river further down. So we can hold a tremendous amount of water in here, we hold less when the river is high, because the river starts to overflow into this natural floodplain, so that's great, that's why we want parks as floodplains. But in a normal course, water flows this way, through. We get some water coming in right here, from the trailer courts and land above there, as well, so, it's a pretty complex system, and we have a couple of weirs within it, so that we can try and drop all the sediment early on, and make sure to have cleaner water flowing through it.
In the absence of rainfall, is that normally dry?
It will dry up. The first, this pond right here, it does, it's the last to dry out, so, it can just have, has a nice silt layer, and can just stay wet for a long period. But this summer, it was, it was dry, until recently. It's, it's pretty full again. So, it's amazing how fast it fills up, and it's amazing the amount of water that flows out that pipe during rain events, it's pretty cool. So, and we just, I just sampled it on Tuesday, so we will have another good idea of what's coming out that outfall, in terms of water quality. But I think this picture really demonstrates what is actually coming out that outfall. It's a lot of leaves, actually, there's a nice amount of cigarette butts, and plastic batteries and stuff.
Plastic straws, probably.
Plastic straws, as you move down through the system, you know, when you get about here, this is just littered with one-inch plastic pieces. I mean, it's just, you start digging into the soil, and, you know, those, that six inches is just one-inch plastic pieces everywhere, of just various things, and that's coming through our system, and not being captured, it's sort of, until at that point, it settles out, so.
So, what do we do with the sedimentation that we clean out of there? Where does it go?
We test it, and if it can go to the Vannett County landfill, especially as daily cover, that's great. So, in gen, when we cleaned it out before, it tested good for going to the landfill, so it didn't have metals, or at levels they didn't want, and oil at levels they didn't want, so we were able to take it up there.
So all those plastic pieces that you're talking about, ended up going to the landfill?
Um, if, yeah, if they're caught in here, we haven't dug out this section where you see the majority of the plastic pieces before.
So they just stay there?
They just are staying there. They don't seem to be, they're also probably getting remobilized during a large enough event, and, and flowing down through the system. A lot of the sediment that's captured, it does remobilize during bigger events, so, they've, ISU did a research study and said, you know, your nitrogen that you're capturing, when it rains again, and water flows through here, it's remobilizing out of the sediment and flowing down, and so, we're learning about how these function with regard to our water quality goals and, and obligations, and so.
Is there a reason why we haven't dug that out, where all the plastic goes?
Um, I think, time and, and equipment, and, you know, and budget power, and, so Streets last year did a lot of work to, you'll notice this cell doesn't have any trees on it, it had grown in a lot, and so last year, they spent a lot of time removing all of the large trees, so that in the future, they can access it again. But we'll talk about, yeah, the maintenance of these facilities is, is a, is a big lift, and it takes a lot of effort, and.
But the efficiency of how they perform looks like, like anything else maintenance.
Yes.
So if we really want to avoid some of that stuff going and re-entering, we need to have a maintenance permit.
Yes, and, and that's gonna require, and this permit is tied to that, and-
Okay, get in the head again.
Yeah, no, right on, it's, I think it's also, it's, it's important to recognize that, that's, these are, these are like any engineered system, they do have to be maintained, it's not a build-it, and it just functions like Mother Nature, and she'll make it right. Unfortunately, that's not the case. They're capturing a ton of sediment, and it doesn't sort of just disappear into the soil, or go away. And so that, and that's, I'd say, a national realization with stormwater, is we built all these systems, we did some maintenance nationwide, and, but they take a lot to make sure that they're functioning as intended. So we also, in the last 11 years, developed an erosion and sediment control program, it's a work in progress, you know, it's, we'll always be working on that, but we've made a lot of headway with that, with doing inspections, enforcement, done river cleanups, and other outreach and public participation activities, this is a group walking down the concrete channel with, looks like a ch, tires, some bikes, et cetera.
Shopping cart.
What, shopping cart?
There's always a shopping cart.
There's always a shopping cart. We're finding a lot less stuff now in the concrete channel, some of the most amount of stuff we always find is also right below the concrete channel, the river settles out there, and so stuff drops off, so, and you can find ATMs, and you can find the app rollers seen on TV, and you can find all sorts of-
I found a gas can from a boat that was set, filled, full of sediment.
Yeah.
And I don't, somebody had to intentionally throw the gas can in there, because a boat didn't come up there wrecked.
Probably not, yeah, yeah, there, there's a lot, sometimes we get a dead cow, so, we're doing a lot better, you know, in the, you know, first half of the century, people were dumping a lot of stuff in the river, right in town, they were dumping stuff upstream, they were, you know, we aren't intentionally dumping huge loads, I mean, people still put mattresses and couches in there, which seems like a lot more work than taking it to the landfill, but I obviously do not understand their mentality.
Did you say cow or cat?
Cow, cow.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
How the cows, I'm not-
Yeah.
Hannah, can I?
Upstream.
Back up for just a second to that, yeah.
This is recent, actually, I should say, this is not 2006, or '07, this is 2016.
Well, and I have a friend who has a brand-new house in the subdivision, and just very recently had a big mud, you know, pile come down, and land like right in front of her house from the upper areas of new construction, and I know we have requirements for the developers, the builders, to prevent that from happening, but what, what's the recourse, like for the homeowners who are in the subdivision, if it does happen? She ended up with a huge pile of mud in front of her driveway, that then she had to go and try to clean, and, how do we deal with that?
Great question. So, this house has a building permit, and tied to their building permit is the requirements for erosion and sediment control. So what we have the ability as staff to do is to put a stop-work order on the, the builder, and say, until you've cleaned up the mess, wherever it is, you're not working on this house. And that's, you know, we can do fines, and we can do nasty grams, but the stop-work order is the most effective generally method. The other recourse is certainly, this builder has a bond, and, so, sorry, the homeowner can, can go after the bond, you know, if there's damage to their property, and so that's gonna be through the building official.
How does that usually come to your attention, in terms of doing the stop-work order? Do homeowners come to the city?
They, they will call, yeah, they call directly, and if we don't hear about it, you know, our staffing levels are such that if we don't hear about it, we don't, we don't know about it, we aren't driving around looking for issues. I wish I could be out more often, but, at a staffing level of one right now, I'm not, and, our engineering department is inspecting commercial sites and subdivisions, because they're out there all the time doing inspections. And our building department is inspecting the residential sites, because they're out there doing inspections, and so, I, but they aren't everywhere, all the time, and so it's really important getting calls in. I'll get calls from city employees, I'll get calls from the public, saying this is a problem, and then we can start to take additional enforcement actions. So, in general, if a building department was doing an inspection on this house for the framing, at the same time, they would be looking at erosion and sediment control, and reminding the builder of their obligations, giving them a compliance schedule, usually a day, or two days, is what we, because most things you can, you just need to go sweep the street, scoop up the dirt, you know, repair whatever thing, it's not a big deal, it can be done rather quickly. If they need more time, we will work with them on that. And then, if you don't respond once, twice, then, then we'll start the stop-work order process.
And this picture is in evidence of their due diligence, because they're the one that took it, right?
Yeah. That's right. So, yeah, so here is an issue, and, you know, this guy would have been told to sweep the street, and, you know, this, obviously, where it's coming onto the neighbor's property is a problem, and a silt fence should have been installed. So, we've got, you know, this is a challenge, an ongoing challenge, and it's a cultural change, you know, and if you can get away with it, you do, and if you see the guy next to you getting away with it, why are you gonna invest? And so, it's, it's a hard one, once the summer starts, and we aren't on top of it, it tends to snowball. Our firms that come from out of town tend to do pretty well, who are national firms coming in for large construction projects, and they're under EPA regulations, and they tend to have the funds set aside to do it well, on our commercial, large commercial projects. But if you know you can get away with it, that people do try their hardest. So, additional, you know, this takes staff time, and it is a staffing issue as well, all around. It's making sure that, we charge appropriate fees to cover the staff time for this as well, we have some nominal fees, and making sure that those adequately cover the time to go out, do the inspection, write the enforcement, inspect the property, et cetera.
Is siltation the primary problem in this stormwater permit? Primary concern?
Uh, it is the primary concern in the river, and the permit also is concerned about oil and grease, and nutrients, and bacteria, but in the river, siltation is, and siltation is also the primary concern in our maintenance of our stormwater facilities. So if you're building something up on Satterfield Highland Bench area, you know, it's gonna take a long time before that sediment, or that water gets down to the Portnoy River. It's probably that sediment's gonna fall out in a pond, and the street department's gonna be cleaning it up, you know, because, you know, the developer, builder, let it get there. And so it's gonna impact our maintenance operations, is, you know, it's gonna fill up the pipes and the catch basins, and so, that's probably in terms of impact, it's not so much to the permit, as just to our ability to maintain our system, is that, when this happens, you know, we not only are spending staff time telling these guys to pick it up, we're spending staff time, you know, cleaning out these systems. Now, for new developments, I know the engineering department is working to make sure that at the end of the two-year warranty period, the developer goes back and gets these systems back into compliance. However, if they're just digging them out, and not, you know, then they have to revegetate, and there's, that is not ideal, you know, once they start to silt in, you do a big maintenance, you've gotta revegetate, there's a, it's, sort of giving them two years to fill in the system, doesn't work, but that's our, that's our fallback, if there is a problem, that at least we can start to make sure that it's not always the street department's full-on responsibility to take care of this, once it's down there. But, good question. So, we did this, we did a great cleanup of tree debris in the lower Portnoy this year, water levels have risen, and it's not super floatable anymore, so we have more work to do next year. And then, you know, at the end of this permit cycle, we asked the community what they wanted in the river, you know, and so, trying to make sure that whatever we're doing for our permit is also meeting our community goals. And so, this river is blue, there's grass beside it, there's people using it, who aren't just with shopping carts walking down the river, there's a lot of differences, so.
No couches.
No couches, yeah. So, that, that, you know, and I think that's really important to keep in mind, is that there's a community goal here, and so we wanna make sure that the permit works for us, as well, and that we aren't just doing permit activities that don't have a, a community So, but permits evolve, so we have new compliance efforts, and new compliance goals. So, in, the EPA is, has not delegated enough staffing time towards, you know, revising and updating new permits. So our wastewater permit, they were in an administrative extension for, I don't know, five or 10 years, I think it was 10. Stormwater, we're at seven years of administrative extensions, and that's fairly common, in general, it's just, their, EPA's ability to get permits out is relatively slow. In 2016 and 2017, EPA decided that instead of giving Pocatello its own new permit, Pocatello Area our own new permit, that they would do a statewide general permit for stormwater for every community in Idaho. We would still have, Pocatello Area would still have our own permit obligations, but we would have the exact same permit language as Idaho Falls, as Moscow, as all across the state, we would all have the same, which was great, actually, it would just simplify things, and we could all sort of be working with the same tools. So they released preliminary drafts to us, so these weren't open for formal comment, but we could give them comments and work through questions, and we did that in 2016, and the spring of 2017, and we provided comments on those, there was a version one, a version two, and lots of iterations in between. And then in last fall, 2017, the EPA sent a preliminary draft to DEQ for 401 certification. So the DEQ makes, is responsible for making sure that the permit meets Idaho water quality standards. So the DEQ gets this ability to review EPA's permit, and say, yes, we, we agree with it, it's gonna help us meet state water quality standards. So they did that, EPA wrote their letter, and so I was expecting last winter, that I would be getting a draft permit, final draft permit, in the spring, and by right now, we would have a new permit in effect. And then, obviously not. So nothing happened, nothing happened. This summer, EPA headquarters issued a directive to the, all their permitting offices, and said, anybody who's applied for a permit, who has never received one, needs to have a permit by the end of the calendar year, so December 31st of 2018. And this is coming out of headquarters, so local, our local EPA staff in Seattle, you know, have no ability to modify this at all. So, that means that anybody such as ISU, that had wanted to be on our permit, had applied for the permit in 2011 to join us, they needed to get a permit by the end of the year. So, that means Pocatello has to have a permit by the end of the year, because we're joining together. Same thing happened in, with Lewiston, because they had Lewis and Clark College. Moscow and U of I had never had a permit, so they're getting one, and then Northern Idaho Highway Districts have joined a permit as well. So, the four entities there are all getting permits. Everybody else, who was on a general permit, EPA will not let us know what's gonna happen to them until 2019, so, we don't know, and so, we're just- And so we're just, they're just waiting. It's weird. It's very bizarre, but that's the situation. There's also, you know, entities that applied for permits in the 1980s, such as, I believe, some of the hot springs that are going to now have permits, you know. So I think DEQ is, and local EPA staff are wading through this and figuring out how to make this possible by December 31st. And so we're caught up in that. So I don't, however, DEQ has now received the draft permit, the final draft permit for final, for 401 certification. They got it in August. Our local staff have, local DEQ staff have reviewed it. They've sent it to their, you know, lawyers, attorney general for review and headquarters review. And we are waiting on that to go back to EPA so I can get a permit I can comment on. The last two weeks, I've kept hearing, next week you're going to get the permit. I will then have 30 days, it's a hard deadline, I don't get to negotiate that for comment, 30 calendar days, which is not much time. And so this, I'm, was planning to meet with you with the permit in hand, however, so I planned out a whole schedule of meeting with various city councils. I don't have the permit in hand, but I'm expecting it next week or maybe the week after. And so I'm just going to go ahead with these meetings now because I know what's in the permit. You know, we're going to have some minor tweaks, but we're, we're at 99%. And so want to make sure to get some of your input and get you brought up to speed on where this is going. That was a lot. Any sort of questions on any of that? Where we're at, where we're at is, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to get a draft permit, we have 30 days to comment on it, and it will be effective by the end of the calendar year.
Do you anticipate any compliance issues?
Yeah, we'll get to that, yes. Good, good question, yeah.
And before you move away from this synopsis of where we're at, I'm a little confused on where ISU fits into this. So will they, that's going to come later or?
They will join us on our permit. So ISU, Bannock County, ITD District 5, City of Chubak, and Pocatello have a joint permit together. And the City of Pocatello manages the permit for those entities because we're the primary, you know, stakeholder here, so to speak. And so they, we have an intergovernmental agreement that between us all, we will update it again, but it includes ISU.
Okay.
And so, but we're, we're a lucky one who gets to have a new permit because ISU wasn't on our previous.
Because we're adding them, okay?
Yeah.
That was where I wasn't sure.
They call it an individual permit, but there's five co-permittees that are on that individual permit. So we will no longer be part of the general permit, the Idaho, State of Idaho general permit.
But ISU is the only new addition of all our co-permittees, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. And so that's.
Do the other co-permittees pay into that or?
They do. So the state pays about six, ITD pays about 6,000, ISU will pay about 5,000, Bannock County and the City of Chubak pay roughly 23,000 to 26,000 per year. And we sort of bill them a portion of our expenses. We'll be revisiting that with the new permit to make sure that that is appropriate as we move forward. But they've, they've been great, I bill them, the money comes, so that's been very helpful. So that helps cover my time spent doing activities like this and writing annual reports, the monitoring we do and the outreach I do on behalf of everybody, as well as, you know, I'll develop a manual for Pocatello that, you know, Chubak can then just pick up and, and use, or Bannock County can use. So we share resources that way.
Federal lands constitute a considerable portion of Idaho. Do they, do the federal land managers have no share in responsibility here?
They are not part of our urbanized area, so here is an image of our urbanized area. So it is a census boundary. And so if you look at this, it's pretty, nobody lives on the federal lands and so they get excluded, basically. It does include some, you know, land when you look at it that has almost no people. So this brown shaded area is City of Pocatello, Chubak, Tahi is up here, and then the white that is within the green is Bannock County land that is part of our urbanized area. And so for Pocatello, it's pretty easy, it's the city. There are these sections right here are the City Creek area that are outside of it for whatever reason, but nobody lives there anyway. And there's other little bits that are out of the urbanized area that are in the city limits, but that, that's how it works. There is federal land within here, you know, on some of the BLM property and such, and yes, it gets, if they do something, they have to comply, but they're not a part of our permit. And so it's very, a little bit trickier dealing with the federal lands and state lands that are within the municipality because we can't force them to do anything. But there was a ruling that said, yes, if they do it, they're still required to comply, but under different administrative acts. But the, all of, everything up on the upper watershed, all, you know, these benches are not part of our permit. Our South County isn't part of a permit. So the airport is not, you know, as well. Other, okay. So we have a new permit. And I actually just want to quickly go through what the changes are and what we're expecting with compliance efforts and to meet that. So slight change to the urbanized area, census of 2010. You know, it's mostly Bannock County gets affected of what little lips they have to add. They have previously drawn a large boundary anyway around the city, and so they'll probably not have to change theirs, they might have to make some modifications, you know, going up Pocatello Creek another 100 yards or something.
What, what will the effect of that adding, what is it, 4,500 acres in the North Gate area?
Is that included?
It's not in there right now.
No, and so that would get added in. The city will have to, as we annex property, it will automatically be included into our urbanized area. So part of the deal is, we can't say that newly annexed land is not part of the urbanized area. We have to, we actually have to do our whole city regardless of the census.
So we extend the boundaries by annexes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It appears that the Bannock County fairgrounds are not included. Am I reading the map wrong?
Yeah, that looks, that looks, that looks correct, yeah. Yeah, it's weird. Yeah. Now, yes. That looks, you're reading the map? Yeah, because nobody lives there. Census, it's probably its own census block. So one of the things we can do with our intergovernmental agreement is working with Bannock County on what land, what applies where and conditions between us. And so because regardless of any water that flows off of the Bannock County fairgrounds into, in this case, Chubak, you know, and then it flows into Pocatello before it gets to the river, you know, we, we want to make sure we have appropriate checks and balances. And just because you're not in the urbanized area, it doesn't give you a full pass. And it really, it really limits where you have compliance obligations to the EPA in terms of paperwork oversight, but it doesn't limit your requirements for, that Chubak and Pocatello can impose on the fairgrounds because this is the kind of water that you're going to send to us.
Will the 2020 census affect this area?
Yes, it will. Yes, so our next permit will take into account the 2020 census.
Okay.
This one won't, you know, we don't have to change our urbanized area, as far as I know. And I, I have only, I've only just begun to read this permit, so I, I still need a few more careful readings to, to check on that. But they tend to just say, hey, in the next five years, you'll update it accordingly.
So, yeah, once we collect that data, then the next time.
Yeah. And at that point, if, once North Gate goes in, you know, if that's here, then you don't have donut holes.
Uh huh.
So.
That would fill in the fairgrounds.
That would fill in the fairgrounds, yeah.
It seems like there's an onus to get a permit, but there's no onus to understand what's being managed because of the delay in which they, they deal with these permits. If we did 2011 or 2018, it's almost like the bureaucracy is for the sake of bureaucracy. You know, I mean, it's not a management thing when you're seven years delayed.
There are, and I think that's one of the really big benefits of DEQ taking over this program is getting to some more timely and permit updates. Because that, that, it's not helpful to, I mean, it's been nice to coast, you know, it enabled us to do the river vision work, you know, but it's not, it's not helpful in terms of, we have additional compliance goals, and I'll talk about those that are outside of this permit and, yeah.
Particularly a problem you generate and then eight, nine, 10 years later, you find out it's a problem when you could have remediated it much earlier.
Yeah.
With much less cost.
Well, and I think the, the fact that they have not renewed it and they're not concerned about it bodes well for us or shows that we're actually doing a good job and we're, you know, we're, we're being responsible and we're implementing the things that we think need to be implemented. If, if they knew that we had issues and concerns, you know, our permit would probably be coming much quicker.
That's a really good point, is they do prioritize which are their problem children, you know, and they get, they get permits much faster.
Yeah.
So Hannah, you said that the airport is not included in our permit, what, why, or what permit is it?
It does not, so land that does not discharge to a water of the US, so a, you know, stream is not in the permit. We still have our ordinances and regulations apply citywide. You know, it, it really doesn't change things, except we don't have to cross as many Ts on some of these properties. You know, they, you can dig out there and EPA is not going to regulate you for erosion and sediment control because it doesn't go to a water in the US. Now, DEQ will care about your dust and the city is going to care about the dust and the dirt tracking, you know, into, and the dirt flowing into our sediment ponds. But, you know, EPA can only regulate things that flow into a water of the US.
But that definition's recently changed again, hasn't it?
No, no. And, and it won't affect something like the airport. It's, it's below grade, so to speak. And so it's land, water that falls there is, just falls into the ground. Now, it does impact groundwater, you know, and, and that can emerge as waters of the state. And so we, it doesn't give us a free ride where we can say, whoo, you know, who cares? It's still going to have, there are environmental impacts on the Snake River Plain Aquifer and when it emerges and downstream wells and surface water. So we have to be, I think, equally careful and it's, it's in my mind better for the city to say, conceptualize it as applying everywhere. And making sure that we're using the same standards and making sure that the airport management, they do just as good a job with spill control as the street department is doing, you know, out on First Street Wetland where, First Street where it might go straight to the river. You know, we don't want to say, hey, just because it doesn't flow to the river, you can do whatever you want.
And that is how we approach it now.
And that is how we approach it, yeah. And, and City of Chubak has been the same way, you know, saying, all right, we're, we're going to, rather than looking at this line and, and treating different entities differently, issues of erosion and sediment control are beyond impacts to water quality of the US, you know, and so we're, we're not just doing this for the EPA. We're, we're doing some of these ordinances for quality of life or management of our facilities and such. And so we have, you know, if council wants to change that, we can change that, you know, that is a, certainly. But there's not much where it's this blanket. It really has to do more with our codes and ordinances related to erosion and sediment control, related to illicit discharge, and how you develop property for stormwater.
Are there particular areas of town that are more concerned than others to you?
So, you know, areas with new development, you know, our big concern is, often is actually the amount of water and, and quality of water that they're going to send to our system. Our pipes down below are small. And we really don't want to, for water quality reasons and financial reasons, you know, if we were just to sort of pipe everything from North Gate straight to the river, that's not going to help us. And so we want to make sure that as we develop, that we're retaining water onsite on those new developments and not imposing, you know, flooding downstream, so to speak, and not making the river worse because of this new development. And we're doing really well at that, I'd say. You know, our, our ordinances enable us to, to get there. Are there tweaks we can make? Yes, but we're, we're doing really well. But this older part of town, there's not a lot of treatment. So that in our older part of town, water falls on the street, goes into a storm lane, drain, and it goes straight to the Portnoy River. And so that's our most challenging spots. It's the part that goes under the Center Street underpass, it's the part that goes in the old, under the old Halliday Street underpass. And those are areas that are, have no treatment at all. We have some abilities to take additional land, probably upstream, so there's land, there's a stormwater pipe that goes through Ross Park. And so when Ross Park new master plan is enacted, you know, we've been in conversation with John Banks about, let's look at doing a stormwater treatment here. And we could take, do a similar to Sacagawea Park, small, much smaller scale, but take something else offline. There's opportunities to do that on North Main where we have some stormwater pipes going straight to the river. But when we think about our pipes at Lander Street and Halliday, it's, it's going to be much more challenging. And we have a lot of shallow flooding of homeowners, you know, caused by large events, and we have really, really dirty water going straight to the river. And I am still concerned about the railroad tracks, impacts of the railroad yard, and so continue to be in conversations with them about ways to utilize some of the railroad land to detain some stormwater and lessen the impacts of the railroad yard on Pocatello. But we, we don't have a lot of vacant land in our downtown and that we can use for stormwater detention and treatment. And so that's, you know, one of the things they've done in Boise, if you're downtown Boise, and they've been redoing sidewalks all along downtown, you probably noticed last time you were there, there's a new section being redone. And so they send the water under those sidewalks and then they have structural grids under there that enable trees to really grow well, but it's also just filled with tons of gravel. And so, and that enables them to just treat and infiltrate stormwater all along their downtown. So obviously we just redid a whole lot of sidewalks in downtown Pocatello, but there are opportunities for places when they come up for renewal of thinking about stormwater infiltration in these dense areas. Because we have a lot of gravels. So, you know, under Main Street and Arthur, they're really high roads, they're, you know, slopes down on either side of them, that's just a big gravel bed there from the Bonneville flood. Some, some opportunities for compliance, but those are, those are costly, right? We're sort of working on the, the cheaper ones first.
Is there concern about the industrial area between Highway 30 and the road?
That is mostly offline and infiltrating, not all of it, but a lot of it along Highway 30 is not connected to the Portnoy River. It just soaks into the ground there. So there are concerns about spills that might happen out there because it, it does flow into our groundwater, which comes out at the T Springs. And so it's a, but it's a different set of regulations. It doesn't fall within a stormwater permit. Okay. Also new with this permit is we'll update our inter-agency MOU. So our agreement with ISU, ITD, Bannock County, City of Chubak, you know, thinking about who, the quality of water that is flowing from city streets onto state highway, back to Chubak, back to Pocatello, who's responsible where. We also have to do a stormwater management plan that says how we're going to comply with this permit. And so within the first year, we'll iron out both of these issues and the stormwater management plan, we can update every year, but it says what we're going to do to comply with the permit activities. And we'll write one for Pocatello, Chubak, Bannock County, et cetera. So what's in it? Contains five things. It contains outreach and public involvement. EPA wrote in our permit, hey, you're doing great on this. EPA wrote in our permit, hey, you're doing great on this, you know, here's some new ways we want you to target certain audiences and we want to make sure you are assessing your program effectiveness, which makes sense and we were already doing that. So I don't see a big change in that except as we want to change it to be more effective. Illicit discharge, not a ton of changes there. You know, we have a city code. EPA said our code is, is in compliance with, compliance with their requirements. We have to do some additional inventory of our mat, of our outfalls and all of our facilities, all of our shops and yards and pipes. We'll have some increased screening of when it isn't raining, what is coming out of our stormwater pipes. So want to make sure that there's no sanitary sewer coming out. We need to update our written spill response procedures, you know. Obviously we've got a lot of, you know, between the street department and the fire department, they've got a great spill response program in place, but we want to make sure that for stormwater, we've got a written, it's all written down of what happens where and how when you get into the Halliday system, which is eight feet, seven feet wide, you stop a spill and contain it there versus another system. And there's staff training requirements. For construction sites, EPA said, hey, our current existing code and process were in compliance. There's a change that they are only requiring oversight if it's an acre or larger or part of a new development, which really means everything. So, but we do that already. So that's, you know, we have some wiggle room actually with our existing requirements to look at them and see what makes the most sense. We have to do additional staff training. So, you know, EPA has said they want proof that everybody who's doing inspections is trained. They can't just trust, they don't just trust us to say they are. Then permanent stormwater BMPs. So these are the ponds and pipes and ditches and such. New requirement is if it's an acre or more or part of a new development, they have to have this. EPA said, hey, you're already meeting this, you're doing great. We have some wiggle room with our current requirements if we wanted to tweak them, but we have a lot of shallow flooding issues and so we probably won't tweak our current requirements because we're really concerned about impacts on downstream properties. We have to do inspection enforcement during construction. We're doing that pretty well. We, we don't charge fees for that though. And so that's really an area where we have, we have to go out and inspect these ponds as they're being built because if they fail, that's not allowed. You know, this permit says you can't have a system that fails. And so stormwater stuff, when it's not installed correctly, tends to fail really well. I mean, it's just, most things fail really well when they aren't installed correctly. But that happens for stormwater as well. And so, you know, are, are, all the pipes for stormwater, you know, are they built as, as designed, you know, that requires sending a CCTV down, you know? And then we need-
Sending a what?
Oh, a camera.
Closed-circuit TV.
Closed-circuit TV. So sending a camera and making sure that we can see what's in there because sticking your head down a manhole doesn't let you see the bumps in the pipe. But we have staff that are great at sticking heads down manholes, too. And the big thing here is operations and maintenance of these ponds on private facilities is that we need to now inspect them and enforce their maintenance on private property. We aren't doing that. I have budget for two people, so if I get to two people, again, we have budget authority that should cover being able to do that. So I don't see that requiring additional funding, but that's probably a halftime person. I mean, that's what they're going to spend half their time on and, you know, at least for three, maybe five years before that program is in better shape. We also have agreements, and we are doing this already, but this is a part of the new permit, is that with every one of these private ponds, there's going to be a city landowner agreement that's got to be enforceable, saying you will inspect and maintain your pond and as such and so forth. So the last thing is good housekeeping. And again, EPA said, you know, City of Pocatello, you're doing, you're doing pretty well with this in terms of you've been, you have a program in place and you've been assessing its, the shape of it, but this is probably the one where there's going to, it's going to take additional budgeting. So a big permit requirement was catch basin, catch basin inspection and cleaning. The permit requires that we inspect all of them, which, you know, would be more than one a day for five years, right? It's, it's, we have a significant number of these. So that's, that's a big lift of something we are not doing. We are going to argue that we should be able to prioritize and skip the ones that we know never have anything in them and just do the ones that are problem children. We also need to maintain all of our detention ponds. So inspect them and maintain them, you know, and that's, we have a lot of those. We have about 100 of those and so they don't have to be done every year, but developing a priority system for that is a big expense. And so Tom could probably talk to you more about that if you're interested. You know, roadside maintenance materials inventory is now required. We're, you know, we know what we have, we're in good shape there. They want to make sure that our street sweeping is being, is effective and so we're going to document that some more, but we've been doing a lot of street sweeping for a number of years and so we just need to prioritize and show the EPA our priority plan. We also, all of our city operations, so how we manage all of our parking lots, how we manage our golf courses, how we manage all of our yards, our craft road, our fill-in pit, our water shop, we will have operations and maintenance plans for all of those. We're already doing most of the things that will go into such a plan, so it's mostly an exercise in writing it out and checking our Is and Ts and such. And then continuing staff training along those lines. So the big take-home message is probably, the big lift is going to be in maintaining the system, you know, our ponds, our catch basin and such there. The other thing about this permit is our permits are tied to our total maximum daily load, TMDL requirements. The state issues water quality standards and the Port Neuf River is allocated certain loads of pollutants and this is negotiated every so many years. This was updated in 2010, updates, but really written in 2002, '03. And so they give us a load for the Port Neuf that says we want our total suspended sediments to be below 35 milligrams per liter and it goes through for bacteria and phosphorus and nitrogen dissolved oxygen. When they did it for the Port Neuf River, the City of Pocatello was given loads. So we were told we were allowed to send this many pounds of sediment into the Port Neuf River from the city above the wastewater treatment plant, so from stormwater. When the DEQ did a 401 certification for the general permit, they said thou shalt meet your load allocations with your stormwater permit. The rest of the state doesn't have load allocations for in the TM, their TMDLs. We do. I am hoping and believe that our new 401 certification will not tie us to these load amounts. So I'm hoping and we will argue strongly that it shouldn't, that that is wrong. But this is where we have to get to regardless is the Port Neuf River has to achieve these loads. And so there's a, there's compliance with the TMDL that is separate from our stormwater permit. It's separate from our wastewater permit and it's where we have to go regardless of these other permits. These permits are designed to help us achieve the TMDL.
That's downstream of the water treatment plant?
The load allocations?
The TMDLs.
The TMDL is for the whole Port Neuf. So everybody, and they have reaches and they say this is the load allocation for this reach or something. So for the City of Pocatello, we were given from Edson Victor to Baty's. And then the wastewater treatment plant, you know, it's at their effluent, but we were given this particular reach. And so the, the way this whole thing is written is that the permit should help us meet our TMDL. And so ultimately regardless of what we're doing with the permit, we're still trying to get to this TMDL goal. And so trying to reduce how many pounds of sediment we dump into the Port Neuf River over time. And I will do everything in my power to make sure we don't have a load allocation with this permit because that would spin up, put us in a downward spiral of awfulness, but that's, we'll see where we get to.
The upstream problems, this picture you have here is Incom.
Yes. Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
So the upstream problems that we have-
Exacerbate.
-come into our area that we have to worry about.
Yeah, so we aren't responsible for those. They're known to be in the river at Edson Victor, but they certainly make the river worse and, and compound our problems. And so it's a reason for the city to be invested upstream because if we can get upstream cleaned up and we can also work with DEQ and EPA to say, hey, instead of doing the stormwater facility, let's do this in Marsh Creek, and this is the water quality benefit, you know, we can, there are avenues for being creative that way and for investing somewhere upstream in order to get the downstream benefit. And so we don't have to spend $5 million on a pond in the city that would require, you know, purchasing land that's really expensive versus a lot of purchasing some agricultural land that conceivably should be less expensive.
Is Incom doing some real revision to their plant? I heard that they were the worst-
Yes.
-violator in the state of Idaho.
Yeah, they, they had a lot of violations and they certainly were the worst. Yeah, so they are taking their entire plant, they're, all of their lagoons are now not going to discharge to the Port Neuf River in the future. So two things have happened. The state highway, I-15 there, used to run into the treatment pond area and exacerbate flooding air issues. And so that is being corrected, which should help. And then two, Incom is right here, going to put their ponds, it's not quite right here, but it's in this general vicinity right here. And so they should no longer discharge to the Port Neuf River ever. They will be in a flood plain, so we'll see how it all works.
Seems like that area right there that you just pointed at floods, it's underwater six months out of the year.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the solution, the flood did it.
That's right.
So, and then for those of you that don't know, it's the Port Neuf River is on top, flowing downstream to the left, and Marsh Creek's on the bottom, flowing downstream to the left.
It looks like the Port Neuf is cleaner by that catch.
Yes, it is, it is about 70% cleaner. It is a lot cleaner.
So could we get, buy a ranch and we just have Marsh Creek flood out across it like a delta that cleans it up and comes back?
That, yes, yes. That is actually, there's, when Ben Crosby came and talked to you, you'll remember, he had two suggestions. One is we need to get the banks stabilized, vegetated, get willows along them, but that's a long-term process, there are hundreds of miles there. But two, Marsh Creek used to be a lot of wetland and there's two ways you can go about it. You can do a big constructed wetland, you know, that you manage just like a detention pond and two, we could start to have wetlands that are more naturally, natural wetlands where water just flows into them at high flows, dumps its sediment. And, and so they've targeted a few spots along Marsh Creek for that and begun the process of working with landowners. The challenge is obviously, you know, if it's a generally wet area anyway and it's, then it's have to be your top production area for hay, right? And so may, you know, these landowners need to be compensated for, for what they're giving up. And so finding the funding to compensate the landowners. So one thing is getting landowners willing to do it just conceptually, but two, making sure they're appropriately compensated for what they're going to do.
So one of the things we need to do is take our money and buy a water right off of the land that we can also transform into a cleaning area.
Yeah, that would be-
Get a double, double whammy.
Double whammy. There, there are some really nice opportunities up Marsh Creek right now, especially with the new water rights regulations and, you know, the calls that are happening and the flow metering requirements that are happening and so it really, but it's going to take, I'm going to tell you, it's going to take somebody to have dedicated time to do that. So, you know, if the council is serious about this, this is, it's not something that somebody can do on five hours a week because it just, it's going to have somebody who bird dogs that and that's just a lot of work, but it's, I'd say it's a great goal and what is needed.
It's probably the most impact to our water quality here that goes through Pocatello.
Yeah, yeah, and it, it's just going to require effort to make it happen and I, but I think in terms of impact, that's, that's where you do it.
Hannah, downstream of this pitcher toward the gap, we have a bunch of oxbows. Wouldn't that help to get those going again and why?
Yes.
What's the process to do that?
We need to basically purchase those land, that land or get the landowner to agree to that. So that, that's basically-
So when they straightened that river out?
It was actually, those were natural, those were pre-1898 straightenings that happened. Doesn't mean they weren't straightened intentionally, but when the railroad came through and surveyed, those oxbows were already cut off. And then landowners over time have used them as sort of irrigation canals and so they've taken a front-end loader through them and, which is why they're really, there's this perfect width, you know, the whole way, which doesn't usually happen with a river. And so they've maintained them that way. I know the current landowner is interested in continuing to do that, but that doesn't help the city at all, you know? There's, so, but using that land as a sediment pond or recreating a wetland there for high flows would, yeah, that would, that would be, you know, that's a nice area that's upstream of the Pocatello, last, last opportunity to catch flows. Constructed wetland, something you could clean out there would make sense and you could take it to the landfill or it's probably high in nutrients, so maybe there's a farmer that wants to buy the material, I don't know. But that, you know, there's a big operations cost there too. And all of these are, I think, though, the way we need to be thinking regarding our stormwater permit and our wastewater permit is looking upstream and, but I don't want to tell you I can do it on five or 10 hours a week. This is an investment of time to work through with consultants and start taking that, making that effort. New permit has monitoring requirements. Our current monitoring of our stormwater required to do in-stream monitoring, which we do at Edson Victor, which is right here on the left, top left, and we have one at Baty's as well. So we get an upstream and downstream. The wastewater treatment plant uses the Baty's monitoring for their upstream of their plant. DEQ conducts, oversees this whole monitoring program, we just support their efforts. We also are required to do one to six grab samples of our stormwater effluent. So Tuesday I was out collecting that. I would love to collect it in the summer, but it never rained this summer. So we do grab samples from our stormwater drains, but I have argued to the EPA that, you know, this river sampling is tied to our TMDL, let's take it out of the permit. This storm drain once a year doesn't really tell us much, you know, what, when did they last sweep the streets, what kind of rain event, when did it last rain? We're not learning a lot that can help us better manage our stormwater. So EPA has said we can revise that and so working with DEQ to set up a program that would really help inform us on, hey, where are our problem sites and what, where can we do better? As opposed to something that just is a, meet the permit requirements because, you know, it only took me three hours to go collect this, but, you know, when you're just meeting permit requirements and you don't think you'll have useful data, it's still not very fun.
Who's doing the water analysis?
So with the in-stream monitoring, DEQ does that. And then the grab samples, oh, sorry, you mean the, you mean analyzing the, the samples themselves. We send some of it to our treatment lab. So Kristy Rowe is able and her staff in the lab are able to do the bacteria and the sediment samples. And then we get a oil and grease and nutrients and we, generally for our river and stormwater samples, we send those to Energy Labs, which is in Billings, Montana.
Why don't we use the local water lab?
The, so we use those for some samples, often when- The, so we use those for some samples, often when I collect sediment samples, I'll, I'll do that. But the, we've just had a great customer service and record tracking with these guys. And so, and all of the river samples from DEQ are set there and the prices are better overall. But I'm certainly happy to go relook at using the local ones. I've just followed DEQ and the treatment labs lead on that, so. But the quality of the data is still, is the same as far as I am. They're both certified labs, so. But that's, that's, that's been the reason for that. And then we're also looking at doing additional flow monitoring because one of the best ways to reduce how much sediment we send to the river is actually to capture more water. Our water is dirty, so let's send more of it into the ground. And so one of the things of working with DEQ is instead of doing these grab samples, let's just monitor flow because we know what's in our water. Let's see how much is coming where. And so, and similar to, the treatment plant monitors flow in their lines, this is a similar system to that. Other monitoring questions? So, compliance.
Got a picture of Jeff up there.
That's Cameron.
So there's a lovely chapter at the end of the permit that says compliance. All right, number one, operations and maintenance is required. You know, you can't walk away and we will, they will nail us for not maintaining and operating our system as we say we will. It's a whole bunch of reporting requirements for if we're non-compliant. If, new to this permit, if we decide to shut down a detention pond and go around it because we want to do maintenance or we just don't like it, that's not allowed. And if we're going to do that, there's a whole bunch of steps and processes. So my big comment to the EPA is let's make sure that we can still operate and maintain our system with these treatment bypass conditions. But if we have an upset, so we send water to the Port Neff River that's above Idaho water quality standards, we need to let DEQ and EPA know. That means every time it rains, we need to let EPA and DEQ know. We're allowed to send one letter in the beginning that says we anticipate exceeding water quality standards for the next five years. But we say within that, this is how we're going to improve, is we're going to do all these activities in our permit so that eventually we won't have to send you this letter. And so, you know, that TMDL is really important, you know, coming back to those water quality standards and what we're tied to. When we take stuff out of our stormwater system, you know, we have to remove it, we have to remove it and track it to its final disposal site. You know, do we need to test it? Do we not? So those are all, you know, in the permit of making sure that that happens appropriately. And then there are fines for non-compliance. It's somewhere over $50,000 a day per offense or six months in jail for the mayor. So you guys can decide if you want to non-compliant.
It's tempting for a member of them up here.
Meals a day.
$50,000.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, and finally
A for friends. Yeah, that's right.
Hey, there's an additional one.
So where, what are the city's concerns with that? You know, we've only done a quick read of the permit so far. One, we want to make sure that the permit language allows us to prioritize how we spend our operations and maintenance time. You know, we have, we've done a lot of review of our system. Street Department collects great data on what they're doing. Let us figure out a priority, you know, that we think is going to work and implement that. We have four and a half years to do it all. So, you know, make sure along that lines that if we have to alert the EPA of any treatment bypass, that we can do so with our, our operations and maintenance plan. You know, make sure that, you know, when we exceed Idaho water quality standards, that we're not going to end up in a downward spiral that just we can never get out of. Load allocation that we're allowed. And finally, December 31st is really soon and so we'd like this to tie to our fiscal year. So we're going to be arguing for an October 1 date. It really won't impact our program nine months or anything. We've got to do it sometime. It'd be nice to have another budget year to prep. I don't know if we can get that. So EPA regional office argued for this October 1 deadline. They were told no, but they said you should argue in your letter and we'll see if you can be, have more weight than they did. So that's, those are the big things that jump out from this permit. But again, I've only started reviewing it and we're going to move forward from there, but how many thoughts, comments you have?
The October deadline, wouldn't it be better if you had notifications when you were developing budget than to come in, when the budget kicks in?
Yeah.
You know, I mean
Yeah.
If we, if we knew, say, March 1st or something like that, where we were developing budget and we had some problems and we need to jump on it, we could build it in our budget.
And I, I agree. And I think one of the big things, though, to remember is that in our first year, we're going to be writing our stormwater management plan and doing just some general data gathering. And then we have four and a half years to implement everything. Now, that's really fast if you have to inspect 2,000 catch basins. That's, you know, you're going to have to, you'll get a year to kind of get your stuff in order and, but you're going to have to be
2,000 catch basins.
Yeah. And, you know, maintaining all of your ponds, that's still a really, you know, Tom's going to be in front of you, I'm sure, with some budget implications from this. And, but I'm going to leave that discussion to him of how he thinks it'll impact his program. So, you know, there's two parts of a stormwater system. There's doing the operations and maintenance of your system and then there's this compliance part of it. And so I can talk to you about the compliance part, but the big implications is, is really your operations and maintenance of the system. And we, we have time with the four and a half years, even if it starts December 31st, but it's, just pushes it all up. And so I will argue as well as I can for October 1 and everybody else in the state, including Association of Idaho Cities, is going to be pushing that as well. And so we're hoping that collectively we'll have a lot of similar comments and so we're starting to work together to make sure that we can be as effective as possible. And so as I work on my initial comments, sharing it with them and seeing what I might have missed that they catch and so we can get a permit that works for all of us. Because that was probably the biggest surprise since these earlier permits was, you know, this timeframe speed up that we weren't expecting.
I really appreciate you're doing everything you can to avoid us getting into the downward spiral of awfulness.
Yeah, thank you.
Because that sounds terrible.
Sounds awful, doesn't it?
I do not want to be in a downward spiral of awfulness.
How, why is Idaho State University separated out as another agency?
All of the universities, this large state-owned lands are because we don't have, we don't have operational control. We can't regulate anything on ISU property. And so as a way of dealing with that nationwide, the universities are required to have stormwater permits. And they can either do it themselves, you know, but it's much more cost-effective to join in with their city and share resources and so.
Why doesn't that include Union Pacific Railroad?
In our what?
Why doesn't the same philosophy apply to Union Pacific Railroad?
They are not a government entity.
We have jurisdictions.
And so, Union Pacific
We don't have controls. No, but we
Union Pacific Railroad has its own individual permit with the EPA under the MSGP, which is, I'm blanking. Anyway, multi-sector general permit, which is for industrial use. And so if you're a paper manufacturing, tire manufacturing, transportation company, landfill, you're required to have one of those. The thing is, it doesn't apply to their tracts. It doesn't apply to most of their yard. It applies to their fueling site and one other little spot. And so it is, for our concerns about the Union Pacific Road, which is everything that's spilled on top of, or yard, everything that's spilled on there and then sort of washes off, their permit with EPA doesn't require them to monitor that and implement BMPs. It becomes our responsibility to work with Union Pacific because we're responsible for the quality of runoff that ends up on our city streets. Yeah. Yeah. I, that's been a sore point.
SIMplot and FMC, are they separate entities?
They are, they are entirely separate entities and since they're out of the city limits, I am not sure what they have, you know, FMC has got the Superfund site, so that's all separate. And SIMplot, I assume, has a multi-sector general permit with the EPA. But they might not flow to surface water and so they, they're just under compliance consent orders to deal with their groundwater issues. And that's really what they've got is groundwater issues. And so they've got that crazy phosphorus load that they've made huge progress on. They still have a ways to go, but we're no longer, you know, 10 to 100 times the limit.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, get your jurors for the second part.
Yeah, I just want to double check, make sure there's nothing else on the agenda before we adjourn, but thank you very much. Thanks. And Jeff, appreciate it. With that, we are adjourned.